Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, August 6, 2024. My name is Ty Mentor, Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Carolina Mahia, to my left Commissioner Emily Claus, and Commissioner Edwards is excused for this meeting. Calling things to order, and we'll kick off with the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Vice Chair Fournier.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Vice Chair, land acknowledgement.
We would also like to start today with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge and thank the indigenous Salish peoples whose elders and ancestors have lived on and cared for the land and waterways of this country, county since time immemorial, and who still inhabit the area today. Specifically, the Squawksen Island, Nisqually, and Chehalis people are sovereign tribal partners. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage indifference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing erasure of injustices done and to remember history as a stepping stone towards healing.
Next up is approval of the proposed agenda. We just had two additions based on this morning to appoint to the Veterans Advisory Board, which are now items 3D and 3E. So with that, revised agenda is our motion.
I move to approve the revised agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion in second to approve the proposed agenda. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So next up is opportunity for the public to address the board. Board of County Commissioners welcomes comments from the public. There are some guidelines governing such comments to ensure they are appropriate. When called, please introduce yourself and clearly the area of the county in which you reside. Address the board, not audience or staff. Silence your cell phones. The board does not respond directly to public comment. On an as-needed basis, the county manager will follow up with specific items. Speakers are limited to a total of four minutes, and meeting attendees may not donate any of that speaking time to other speakers. Board reserves the right to restrict a person's opportunity to address the meeting for good cause. No comments that are lewd, offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature. Please be respectful. No helpers of any kind, comments that are commercial in nature, such as promotion of a for-profit business, or remarks about pending land use permits, or similar matters that could eventually come before the board on appeal. While materials provided to the county may be considered public records, subject to public release upon request pursuant to Public Records Act, Chapter 4256 RCW. With those advisements, I will call the first speaker and who's on deck, and then if anyone else is, we'll call the folks on Zoom. John Pettit, you're up. Terry Ballard on deck.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. It seems like forever since I saw you, maybe even just this last weekend. But, my name is John Pettit. I'm from Rich Road, East Olympia. A couple issues that I just thought I'd like to bring up, and I think it's, one of the issues first I'm going to cover that I hadn't anticipated dealing with too much, but it has to do with the position as commissioners that you are multitasked with several different parts. One is a legislative duty, another is an administrative duty, and another is a judicial duty. And each one has its own implications, and each one has its own responsibilities. It's not all the same thing. You're not in a legislative duty necessarily when you're approving a voucher list. That'd be an administrative function. One of the things which I wanted to bring forth was a suggestion that all of the elements that you're taking on, all the considerations of business, events, each should have a financial analysis tied to every topic. Before you actually start discussing something, you need to analyze what's this actually proposal going to cost, short-term, medium-term, long-term? Because essentially, you affect your budget, the county budget. You affect the entire financial commitments for the county. And as we all know right now, some things in our economy aren't looking overly bright. Might want to be considered a strap-down for our recession, or other things which might limit our income even more. Which brings me actually to the second topic. I am highly advising that while we all love the environment, there is a topic referred to as the Deschutes Estuary Project. Capital Lake is a part of the Capitol Campus. It's designated so through the RCW. So it's legislatively designed and owned by the state of Washington. Thurston County should not be deciding to contribute towards anything to do with that process until, first of all, it would ever be released. And the second part is, none of that's actually located in the unincorporated portion of Thurston County. And so I think there needs to be some real thought about this process of where it's going. I realize if you consider that Capital Lake is part of the Capitol Campus, the question is, is what obligation does Thurston County have for maintaining the Capitol Campus? And that's essentially what's being asked here, is they would like you to step up and pay for the costs involved for maintaining their facilities. Goodness, though, is we don't have the state stepping up and giving us $50 million to maintain our facilities. So taxes are all assigned very specifically for each individual governmental agency. I did send you a little letter this morning regarding some of this. I think it becomes a gifting of public funds if all you're doing is contributing to something, and we don't have the money, we don't have the revenue, to be contributing to any other source. My estimate that I'd seen was, it looks like it'd be another $1,000 a day worth of cost to the county to join into that project. You don't have it. We can't spend $5,000 a day plus for a $50 million buy, $7,000 a day for this building, and another $1,000 on top of it for dredging the bay. So, thank you very much. Give that little note a look at. And it's okay to step back from doing what you thought about. Move forward with how we can afford things. Thank you.
Terry Ballard is next.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Terry Ballard. I reside in Tanglewild, which is unincorporated Thurston County. I'm a 35-year veteran. I served under this flag. For other veterans who do not stand and recite the pledge, for people that have been dying under that flag, buried under that flag, have flown that flag, have saluted that flag when they were a veteran and ran on veteran status, I feel that's not right. But it's a personal choice, but you're not here for a personal choice. You're here to represent your people, your district. Today, I noticed you had two people that wanted to join the Veterans Advisory Board. That's a volunteered position. But in your code, it says that they need a letter representing their nationally-recognized veterans group. Okay? I'm a member of four veterans groups. Four lifetime members of four veterans groups. I'm not their representative. In your own code, it says represent. And when I asked for that, I was sandbagged for that. I asked for that previously. I was sandbagged for that. You know what? I really don't care because you don't care about veterans. That's my whole key, okay? These people have never had a representation letter from their veterans group. They should not be on the board. Also, I see numbers on these people that have been, these board members, and they should no longer be a board member because they exhausted their time. Next. Building 1, 2, and 3. I looked at a budget in 2023. It says, and I'll read, "Central service building reserves are established for a number of buildings to fund the major maintenance and replacement of critical building infrastructure and systems at the end of life cycles, such as roofs, boilers, fire alarms, systems, and air conditioning systems. An annual contribution funds each program." Where's this come from? Comes from rent. All these departments that rent those spaces, rent for the cleaning, rent for the maintenance. They pay for that. Who's paying it now? Okay? Where did all this money go to for building 1, 2, and 3, for all this stuff that you're asking for? Answer? It was squandered away. Okay? I don't appreciate my funding being squandered away, okay? For something that should be already budgeted, already there. And why are we paying for a $50 million bond payment with bond payments? Why are we paying for a bond payment for bond payments to fix up a building that should already have the funding for it? I don't understand that funding, okay? Next, these lakes. I don't think it's fair that we have lake districts. Because the lakes are owned, rivers are owned, all the water are owned by the state. They should be taking care of this stuff, not the lake districts. And as far as Capital Lake, we don't even reside. We, as unincorporated Thurston County, don't even reside on Capital Lake. It belongs to Tumwater and Olympia. If they want a lake district and they want to pay for that, they should be covenanted under a lake district. Thurston County Unincorporated should not be paying anything on these lake districts. Period, okay? It should be for the state. I'm sorry if the state can't own it. I'm sorry if the state owns it and can't take care of it. It's not our problem as far as Thurston County Unincorporated. I could care less about Tumwater, could care less about Olympia. But Capital Lake specifically has nothing to do with Thurston County, even though we had a treasurer say, hey, we can spend billions on cleanup. And that's just imagining that we have billions to spend, which I know we don't. Thank you.
Anyone else in the boardroom that didn't get a chance to sign up? Nope. On Zoom, we have Chris Lester.
No comment.
Grace Adams.
No comment.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for today. Appreciate that. We'll go to County Manager's Update, item 2.
Morning Commissioners, nothing to report from the County Manager's Office, but thank you.
We have a consent agenda of items 3A through 3E. Is there any request from a commissioner to remove an item from the consent agenda? I, there was mention given in public comment that the two Veterans Advisory Board appointments, they need to be members of veterans groups. And I would pull that from the consent, I'd like to pull that from the consent calendar, and perhaps that can be discussed, or that can be shown truthful to us that they are members of veterans advisory groups. Does that sound advisable? That's, you're absolutely right. So items D and E will be removed from consent, and we can place them later on in today's agenda? Yes, sir. Okay. Move them down to item 7. Okay, so with that, we have items 3A through 3C. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar as amended.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve items 3A through 3C. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Those items are approved. We'll move to item 4A. This is a Commissioner's Department item, office item. Commerce Clean Energy Fund Electrification Transportation Systems Grant Agreement. Rebecca Harvey, Climate Mitigation, Senior Program Manager, to present to the board.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So staff is requesting board approval of a grant agreement with the Washington Department of Commerce for a grant of $367,343 to install electric vehicle charging stations at the Southwest Washington Agricultural Business and Innovation Park in Tonino, known as the Ag Park. This project builds on an ongoing partnership among Thurston County, Thurston Economic Development Council, the City of Tonino, and other partners to develop and promote the Ag Park as a regional hub for agritourism and rural development. The project meets the state of Washington's goal of filling gaps in electric vehicle infrastructure in rural areas, and it contributes to the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions in the transportation sector. Under this grant agreement, the Department of Commerce will pay Thurston County upon acceptance of services provided and receipt of invoices for completed milestones as described in the scope of work and budget attachments. And Thurston County will fulfill the grant reporting requirements as detailed in the reporting attachment sheet. I'll be happy to take any questions about this grant agreement. Thank you.
I have a question. So it says in the motion that there'll be two DC fast charging stations and two Level 2 charging stations.
That's right.
And my question, Level 2 charging stations are pretty much,
Medium.
They're around the community quite a bit, and they're good for people that are going to work all day or whatnot.
If you're there a few hours and-
Fast charging stations are in high demand because they can help commuters or travelers, long-distance travelers. So I'm just curious, how will those be managed? Is that contracted with a company and you just pay? Or is it for folks that are only using the Ag Park? Or what's the access look like for those?
For the management of the stations? That, it is included in the grant budget and required by the grant that they have maintenance and service agreements, as well as networking software agreements for a five-year period. So that's all included in the grant and paid upfront as a five-year service plan. And then the onsite project manager for the Ag Park will manage their operation on an ongoing basis.
So they have discretion as to how, who can access those chargers, the Ag Park?
They need to be publicly accessible to comply with the grant, if that's what you're asking. As far as who can access them?
Yeah.
They are public chargers.
Okay. Any other questions? Motion?
I'm happy to make this motion. This is something that we started working on when I was mayor of the city of Tonino. So I move to approve contract number 24-92201-036 with Washington Department of Commerce to receive grant funding in the amount of $367,343 for the Clean Energy Fund Electrification and Transportation Systems Program to install two DC fast charging stations and two dual-Level 2 charging stations at the Southwest Washington Agricultural Business and Innovation Park in Tonino, and authorize the county manager to execute the contract and amendments that do not exceed 10%.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to approve this contract with Department of Commerce. Any discussion on the motion?
I would actually like to give Rebecca a huge shout-out because she has really, really gone out there and hustled for these grants. And once she gets these grants, she works with different community partners and seeing like what are going to be the areas where we can really add value. And so just thank you, Rebecca, for all of your hard work and getting these grants and making them accessible all over our community.
Thank you all. Appreciate that.
Okay, and your fellow?
Yep, new staff.
Yes. All right, so with a motion and a second, no further discussion. I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm still first.
You're still here, though. Yes, for 4B, which is a related item. Go ahead.
Yep, so this item 4A, 4B follows on item 4A. It's for the same project, to install EV charging stations at the Ag Park. This is an interlocal agreement with the city of Tonino, requiring the city of Tonino to be responsible for implementing the project in compliance with all terms and conditions in the grant agreement between the Department of Commerce and Thurston County. Tonino will use a competitive procurement process to select a contractor to purchase and install the chargers, and will submit invoices and reports to Thurston County and meet regularly with county staff during project implementation as described in the monitoring plan attached to the interlocal agreement. And the county will reimburse Tonino upon receipt of funds from Commerce.
Questions on this piece? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the interlocal agreement with the city of Tonino to provide state grant funding of $367,343 for the city of Tonino to procure and install electrical vehicle supply equipment at the Southwest Washington Agricultural Business and Innovation Park, and authorize the county manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the ILA with the city of Tonino. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, Rebecca.
Wonderful. Thank you all.
Okay, great. Public Health and Social Services is next, 5A. An interlocal cooperation agreement for home investment partnerships program. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Alex Purce, Affordable Housing Program Manager in the Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention. I'm here this afternoon to ask you to approve the interlocal cooperation agreement between Thurston County, the city of Olympia, and the city of Lacey to participate in and receive funds as a home consortium under the Federal Home Investment Partnership Program for the program years 2025 to 2027, and authorize the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners to execute the agreement. Thurston County, as the urban county, represents all cities and towns except the cities of Olympia and Lacey, and is required by the Department of Housing and Urban Development to enter into an interlocal cooperation agreement with the city of Olympia and the city of Lacey to form a home consortium in order to receive and spend Federal Home Investment Partnership Act funding. The county must renew these agreements for the next three-year period, which covers the program years 25 to 27, to continue receiving home funds. This renewal period, we will be signing an agreement with the city of Lacey. As they have notified HUD, they intend to become their own entitlement community. The city of Olympia City Council approved and signed this agreement on July 16. The city of Lacey is reviewing and signing it at their meeting this evening. Thurston County is required to submit this renewal package to HUD no later than August 16.
Questions on this item? We've gone over this a couple, three times, so appreciate it. A little bit confusing, honestly, but I think I've figured it out. One entity pulls out, and then they have to sign the other agreement.
So that we can still spend the home dollars within the city limits of Lacey, because we will not be representing them.
Okay, so that's just good. It's basically a good regional cooperation amongst our partners to try to put the dollars where they're most needed.
Exactly.
Is really the idea. Okay. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the interlocal cooperation agreement between Thurston County, sorry, the city of Olympia and the city of Lacey to participate in and receive funds as a home consortium under the Federal Home Investment Partnerships Program for the program years 2025 to 2027, and authorize the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners to execute the agreement.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the interlocal cooperation agreement between the county, Olympia, and Lacey. Any discussion on this motion?
I'll give another shout-out. I'll give a shout-out to Alex over here because I know managing the CDBG funds, as well as making sure that the different jurisdictions programs fit within the guidelines is a lot of work. And I know you've done a lot of work in trying to bring all the partners together and trying to get them to sign on to this new agreement, so just great job on that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, 5A, 5B. Interlocal cooperation agreement and MOU for Community Development Block Grant, Urban County Entitlement Funds. Back to you, Alex.
Thank you. So for this item, similar to the previous item, I'm here to ask you to approve the interlocal cooperation agreements and memorandums of understanding between Thurston County and the town of Yukota, and cities of Rainier, Yelm, Tonino, and Tumwater to participate in and receive funds as an urban county entitlement community under the Federal Community Development Block Grant Program for the program years 2025, 2027, and authorize the Chair of the Board of Commissioners to execute the agreements. So it's same, it's just the other, the community development block grant side of the renewal process. So it mirrors kind of a process for home. So we are required by HUD to renew this, our urban county designation every three years, and that requires the signing of interlocal cooperation agreements with each participating jurisdiction. So the interlocal cooperation agreement outlines the roles and responsibilities, restrictions of the CDBG program. And then the memorandum of understanding outlines the more specific details regarding our governance structure of our consortium. So this renewal period will assign interlocal cooperation agreements with the town of Yukota and cities of Rainier, Yelm, Tonino, and Tumwater. In previous renewal periods, we also signed with the city of Lacey. However, they have notified HUD of their intent to become their own CDBG entitlement community and receive funds directly from HUD. So these ILAs and MLUs will be combined with the home ILA and submitted to HUD no later than August 16, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I just want to say thank you to Alex and the rest of the staff, County Manager, for keeping this program going with our curveball that we got thrown.
Thank you.
Call for the vote. All in favor say aye. Oh, was there a motion yet?
Not yet.
Sorry. I got ahead of myself.
Whoa. Move to approve the interlocal cooperation agreement memorandum of understanding between Thurston County and the town of Yukota, cities of Rainier, Yelm, Tonino, and Tumwater to participate and receive funds as an urban county entitlement community under the Federal Community Development Block Grant Program for the program years of 2025 to 2027, and authorize the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners to execute the agreements.
Second.
Motion in second to approve this interlocal cooperation agreement and MOU. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I'm ready with those ayes, so I'm just like, should I move them out? Calls for the vote.
Public Works is next, 6A. Contract award for Thompson Creek Road Southeast at Thompson Creek. Fish Passage Project CP number 63025. Marcus Storvik, Senior Civil Engineer. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Marcus Storvik, Public Works, Senior Civil Engineer. On July 10, 2024, a total of four bids were received to construct the Thompson Creek Road Southeast Thompson Creek Fish Passage Project number 63025. The bids were received in response to advertisements in the Olympian Daily Journal of Commerce and posted on the Builder Exchange of Washington website. The low-responsive bid was received from Misana Construction Incorporated of Gig Harbor, Washington, with a bid amount of $1,343,493.40. The total project cost is approximately $2.5 million. Public Works received a grant, received a grant of $500,000 from the Bryan Abbott Fishberry Removal Board, as well as a grant for $80,000 from the Sandy Recovery Funding Board, with the remaining $1.9 million funded from REIT to allocate for the program. This project will replace a 10-foot diameter pipe with a 70-foot prefabricated steel girder bridge, and that bridge was previously purchased through a separate contract and is currently actually sitting at our facility, facilities, ready for installation. The removal of this final barrier on Thompson Creek will open over 10 miles of upstream habitat. And I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Questions for Marcus? 10 miles, so can you remind me of where this comes in and what area it covers?
For the location?
Yeah, like for the county. Fish passage, or what stream are we talking about?
So this one, this is Thompson Creek itself. It's a tributary of the Scoobham Chuck.
Okay.
So the site itself on Thompson Creek Road, it's 1,000 feet north of Lewis County line. So it's very south county.
Got it.
But yeah, tributary of the Scoobham Chuck.
Got it. Okay, well, that's cool. Any questions for Marcus? Nope. Is there a motion?
I move to award the contract for the Thompson Creek Road Southeast at Thompson Creek Fish Passage Project number 63025 to Misana Construction, Inc. of Gig Harbor, Washington,
Washington, in the amount of $1,343,493.40, and to authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the contract and any change orders for this project due to unforeseen conditions only, not for changes in scope, for up to 10% of the contract, $134,349, or an aggregate of $1,477,842.
Sir, second?
I'll second.
Motion and seconded to award this contract to LaSana Construction. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to double back to items, uh, they were originally three D and three E, they've been moved into item seven, and I don't know if we were able to get
Chair, our clerk of the board, Amy Davis, was able to do the research, and so she can go ahead and read off the specific code and provide some guidance to the board.
Okay. Amy, why don't you brief the board on what you were able to determine?
Thurston County Code Section 2.122.030B states, "The Veterans Advisory Board shall be compromised entirely of veterans who are residents of Thurston County. A majority of the advisory board members must be elected officers or members of a nationally recognized veterans organization located in Thurston County as evidenced by written notice from the nationally recognized veterans organization. Currently, 13 of the 15 members of the Veterans Advisory Board are members of a nationally recognized veterans organization. Prior item three E is for the reappointment of, uh, Liza Narciso. Her membership of a nationally, I'm sorry, her membership of a nationally recognized organization was confirmed upon her original appointment in, um, 2018. She is a member of the National Association of State Women Veterans Coordinators, and also a member of the National Association of State Directors of Veterans Affairs. Tom is not a member of a nationally recognized veterans organization. If this reappointment and appointment are made, 13 of the 15 members of the Veterans Advisory Board will be members of a nationally recognized veterans organization."
Thank you.
So the requirement is that a majority of the members are members of a nationally recognized, and currently 13 of the 15 are confirmed members of a nationally recognized veteran? Okay.
Okay, so we would, does that cause you any concern?
No, I mean, that, that meets the, that cert, sounds like it certainly meets the standard. And then one of these appointments, we've confirmed that their, their membership in the state women's veterans court, state, what is it? The National Association of State Women's Veteran?
Veterans Coordinator.
Coordinator, that, that qualifies. Okay.
We then, uh, is is there a motion regarding items seven A and B? For, give me the information and to delay this item.
Uh, well, no, I'm good with it because the, I'm, Liza, Liz, is it Liza or?
Liza.
Liza. It is, we've confirmed it. The written note, whether or not there's written notice, we have, we've done, we've vetted that person. And then it's, the only requirement is that a majority of the members of the board. So I, I move to approve, uh, I move to appoint Tom Schrader to the Veterans Advisory Board as a regular member for the remainder of the unexpired term through November 1st, 2024.
I'll second.
Motion and seconded to appoint Tom Schrader. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I just want to say again that while we have not confirmed that he is a member of a national organization, it is not required because a majority of the members already are. Okay.
Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Schrader is appointed. Let's look at Liza Narciso's reappointment. Is there a motion?
I move to reappoint Liza Narciso to the Veterans Advisory Board for the term of August 1st, 2024 through August 1st, 2027.
Second.
Second to reappoint Liza Narciso. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I, I also want to point out that these, both of these applicants come as recommendations from the Veterans Advisory Board themselves. That's okay? Okay, thank you.
Another discussion, uh, we had a motion, right? And a second? Yes. Commissioner Klaus seconded. Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. That covers the business items. Next item is, uh, was previously seven A, which is Commissioner Reports on any work sessions or community events. Commissioner Klaus, start with you.
Thank you. Um, I had a pretty light week. Um, as far as committee meetings, I did not have any, but I did attend a ride along with the Animal Services Field Service Team. Last Friday, I attended the Courthouse Campus Subcommittee Meeting and the Pancake Breakfast on Saturday.
Thank you. Commissioner Mejia?
Um, I gave a thorough report. I'm happy to go over it really quickly, um, yesterday, uh, but, uh, so I attended the Washington State Association of Counties, uh, Special Board of Directors Meeting. I attended Transit Appreciation Day. I also attended the 20-year Nurse Family Partnership Celebration. Great celebration. Uh, we learned that they've served over 17,000 families since their inception, so that is just, uh, great, the support that they are offering to new parents. Uh, attended the Thurston County Fair Opening Ceremony. Uh, also attended the TRPC Assessment Subcommittee where we, uh, discussed new assessments that are going to be going out to all the jurisdictions to participate for, uh, IT infrastructure. Uh, attended the Board of County Commissioners, the Courthouse Subcommittee, also attended the Pancake Breakfast, um, and attended, uh, the InterCity Executive Meeting. I, uh, just do want to give a really quick shout out to our fair board volunteers, um, and our new fair board manager, um, on a great job. Every year I go to the fair, I see just different things that the fair board has done and their volunteers have done to make the fair better, and, um, it, it was just such a great event, it always is, and, um, just a big shout out for all of their hard work, and I know we'll probably receive the numbers later. I'm looking at Josh, probably receive the numbers later on, on how we were this year in attendance, but, uh, just great job to them.
Thank you. I know we served more pancakes during last year. I felt it. But that's, uh, there's a report, I think, coming on that at some point, so.
On pancakes?
Yeah, on the fair data, including the pancakes.
Was there a pancake counters? They went out?
They count how many people, and there's two pancakes per plate.
There you go.
So you can kind of tell how many pancakes you, you served out to the community based on that.
I don't think we count the seconds. There were several people that came back for seconds, uh, especially for those buckwheat pancakes that were very popular.
We had some pancake art by our very own Josh Cummings, uh, making shapes of the, of Thurston County and Saturn and some of the, of the cosmos.
Thanks. Fun day.
Commissioner Forney.
I, uh, attended Off at Lake Weed Survey. So I went out with the Off at Lake Lake Management District and, uh, checked out weed proliferation throughout the lake. I also visited the fairgrounds and talked to a lot of the students who were out showing their animals. Uh, chaired the Subcommittee Meeting for the Courthouse Discussion, and then Thursday night I went to a badge pinning ceremony for Lacey Fire District's new Assistant Chief.
Can I ask if you, uh, so on the Off at Lake thing, we've had, you know, contention that the weed that was proliferating, that was causing the problem, is not a problem anymore. Were you able to make any sense out of that back and forth?
There were three weeds in particular that were, uh, of note, and, uh, one's supposed to be there, but it's going, going a little crazy, and then there's some more fragrant lily pad that they're trying to control, and then there was something under the water that they were pulling out on a rake. But as far as like how it stacks up from previous surveys, I have not reviewed the data yet. But we had fun.
Yeah, no, I thought that was good. All right. Uh, for me, uh, pretty light on external communi, uh, committees. I attended Nurse Family Partnership, both their 20th Anniversary Celebration and then the picnic they had for participants, which was nice to see some of the, some of the faces that are served and kids. Uh, the fair, just like Commissioner Mejia, I was at the kickoff and got the honor of giving opening welcome remarks, and then narrowly lost to the sheriff in the dark competition. Um, I'm still not sure an antenna is part of the bee, but I was overruled on that, so I got second place. After a very tense shootoff with Jim Cooper, who tied me for second. And then the WASEC Virtual Assembly was about the, um, recommendations coming from the Governor's Task Force on Public Health. Some recommendations came out of that. I reported on that at Commissioners' check-in yesterday. So with that, if there's anything else for the good order, we're, we're done, and the agenda is complete and the meeting's adjourned.